Chair calls the October 3 Stanley County Board of Education to order. I'd like to welcome all of you here tonight. Just a note on the agenda, without objection from the board, item 13 will be inserted between item 11 and 12. Mr. Graves is not with us tonight, he's in California, and I'll ask Ms. Crump if she would to lead us into invocation and also the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand when we do the allegiance.
By your heads, please. Lord, we come to you with open hearts and open minds, our hands stretched out with an offering of service. Show us where you need us. Meet us here in this place tonight, God, and bless each person who is here with eyes that can only see as you see, and with ears that can only hear your truth. And, Lord, give us wisdom for discernment, so that any decisions made will follow a path only lit by you. We are in the business of educating our future generations. Help us to set an example of love and honor for one another, and that example will be a life lived in honor of you, Lord. Amen. Please stand and join us. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Crump. I've been out in the heat some today, my voice is about gone, I hope you can bear with me First item on the agenda is a request to address the board by Mr. Jim Meisner, Richfield.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Can everyone hear me at this time? Okay, thank you. Bumped into Mr. Poole the other day outside, and I was talking to him about concerns about the traffic at Richfield, and I mentioned to him that I have a lot of documentation that I would like to share with the board. Many years ago, I worked for this organization, and I got sent to a workshop, and the thing we talked about at that workshop was document, document, document. Now, as I get old, my memory has faded, and I'll promise you, I don't remember like I used to, and it wasn't good then. But seven years ago, we started having problems at Richfield, and I was the mayor at the time, I'm on the town council now, but realizing how quickly things get turned around, I kept documentation, and I have compiled a book, about almost 20 pages, and I've provided each one of you one of these books, one for the attorney, one for the superintendent, and I kept several for myself. If I went through and explained everything I have in here, and I've got much more at home, I'd run past my three to five minutes Mr. Poole said he would give me. When I mentioned about possibility of saving $200,000, he said, "Well, we might give you four minutes." So, I'm not going to explain this book, but I urge you to look at it. And, in fact, I'm not telling you what to do, and I'm not telling you how to think. But I do know for a fact, and it's documented by an article from the Stanley News &amp; Press seven years ago, that explains that we had a DOT engineer here in Abilmarl who came to Richfield, compiled a very lengthy report, 10 options, and she made some recommendations. One of the options, and I'll mention that in just a minute, was free, and she recommended that we try it. In seven years, we have not tried it, but rather, now I understand the board is considering using some state money to try an option that could possibly cost in the decency of $200,000. So, what I'm asking you to do is look at this, and if you think there's some merits to this DOT engineer's thinking, talk with her, not me, and if she still agrees that that's a good option, what you might want to do, and that's your decision, not mine, you might want, after you talk with her, get her to compare that to the, what I call the Chambers Engineering Plan that you've been considering, and see how she compares and contrasts it. And if she says the Chambers Plan is much better, then I would go with her recommendation. If she says she's not sure, then I would suggest to the town of Richfield, "Well, why don't you try the plan that costs zero dollars before we spend $200,000 of the taxpayers' money?" Now, whatever you decide, it is your land, it's your money. But if you look at this documentation, she put a lot of work into her study. So, what I brought with me today, and I'm just going to point out a few things, excuse me, in this book, the blue tab is the Chambers Plan. And if you notice there, there's some slight hash marks that don't show up well on the map, and when I asked Dr. James, he quickly said, "Well, if money runs short, we may have to go where the hash marks are." If you turn the page, this is my map, same thing, except I've made it real clear where the hash marks are. Now, the public in Richfield and Meisenheimer in New London, as of yet, haven't seen this map, and they don't know that in the future, the road could actually be where the orange mark is instead of the original. And the thing is, right now, we don't have people getting all up in the air, but if you are proactive and ask DOT to examine this, they may say this is the best option, no matter whether it's the orange or the yellow. I don't know. Turn the page to the yellow. Option three was what Pete Butler deemed as not satisfactory, and if you look at this map, wow, it looked very similar to the Chambers Engineering Plan. Now, that doesn't mean they're the same, but it is very similar. So, once again, if Ms. Butler says, "Well, things have changed," I find this very, very, very agreeable, wonderful. Turn to the orange tab. This is, the orange tab is option nine, and that's what she recommended, and she explained why. If you turn to the red tab, this is where the Stanley News &amp; Press had printed an article, so don't take my word that she recommended. Now, I know you can't read the fine print, but turn the page, and it's been re-typed, and down towards the bottom, it says, "Butler Recommended Option Nine," and then she goes on to explain why. If you turn to the white tab, Art Whitaker, who was the Director of Transportation at that time, he put a lot of thought into this, and he said, "If the money was there, and if the land was there, then the best option for the long run would be to run a road." So, if you turn over a couple more pages, you'll see another map which comes in from the industrial development. Now, what the people in Richfield don't know, well, a couple of them do. What the people in Richfield don't know is right next to Richfield School, and I'm going to leave you this map, is a parcel of land which is in yellow, and that yellow was given to the town by Mr. Carlton Tyson, who is a very wealthy man in Monroe, owns Industrial Ventures, and he gave the town 70 acres, and he also gave this yellow section right here. And this yellow section, he told me personally, could be used for Richfield School. So, when you're considering these different options, knowing that the town was given this land, and knowing that Mr. Tyson said it could be used, if we have to cut corners, or we have to shave off parts of the asphalt, consider the fact that if you ask the town for this land, they might give it to you. They might not, but they might. Now, at the last town council meeting, and I'm going to leave this here, the town made a motion and seconded, and said they wanted to send y'all a letter stating that they were in favor of the Chambers Plan. Well, I voted against it, and I could be for it, especially if they're going to give land and/or money. I was against it because I didn't know, is it going to go around the ball field or through the ball field? And why support something if you don't know where it's going? Well, they voted, and I think you have received a letter saying they're in favor of the plan, wherever it goes. A check and a deed would be real meaningful if they included that in the envelope. In other words, those of you that attend church, you know when the good Lord gives us blessings, and we're asked to consider all our blessings should we tithe. Well, 10% of 70 acres would be seven acres, and if y'all are going to give $200,000, 10% of that would be $20,000. So, before you just tell Richfield that we're going to foot the bill for all this, but we may cut corners, say, "Well, we're going to foot the bill for this, and we may have to cut corners, but if you have money," and they do, "and if they have land," and they do, "ask them to meet you not halfway, a tenth of the way, and provide a little support because the people at Richfield don't know that right now, there's a road that may go through their kids' playground, and next year, their kids may be playing Dodge Car instead of Dodge Ball." Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. McIntyre, I think this falls under your domain, so we'll let you pick the ball up and run with it from there. Okay. Had to bear with us tonight, we're going to have quite a few recognitions, I don't know, we may have some now and some later, but anyway, Dr. James recognizes you for some recognitions.
I'll ask Ms. Cowart if she would join me at the podium for the Assistant Principal of the Year and Principal of the Year selections and awards tonight.
October is National Principals Month, and we want to take time to show our appreciation to our principals and assistant principals who work tirelessly, day in and day out, to ensure the success and well-being of each student in our schools. If you are in the audience and are currently serving as a principal or assistant principal, please stand and remain standing. It is well-known that principals and assistant principals are among the hardest-working, yet often least-recognized individuals in education. To our principals and assistant principals, you are the ones that set the academic tone for our schools, and it is your vision, dedication, and determination that provide the mobilizing force for achieving student success. We recognize you and salute you for the great job that you do daily, not only during the month of October, but every month of the year. Thank you.
For years, Stanley County Schools has participated in the Wells Fargo Principal of the Year program. This year, we are pleased to include our assistant principals in our recognition. Administrators and district directors were asked to select an outstanding assistant principal and principal to represent our district. Each candidate is expected to merit the respect and admiration of students, teachers, and other professional coworkers, parents, and members of his or her community. They should be active not only in their schools, but also in their communities where they distinguish themselves as leaders. Candidates should demonstrate the ability to improve the achievement of students from various backgrounds with differing capabilities. Chairman Poole and members of the board, selected as Stanley County Schools Outstanding Assistant Principal is Kristin Sides. Stanley County Schools Principal of the Year, Mrs. Emily Shaw.
Okay, we have before us minutes from the September 3 regular meeting. Are there any corrections or deletions that need to be made to the minutes? Here in none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Okay, committee reports, instruction program, Mr. Jeff Chance.
No report, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chance. Facilities, Mr. McIntyre.
No report.
Finance, Mr. Graves in finance. Okay. Personnel, Ms. Watson.
A report.
Policy, Ms. Crump.
A report.
And Ms. Gibson, Dr. James, Legislative Research.
I don't have anything, Dr. James.
Well, that's an easy one tonight, we have no budget. So, they will adjourn October 31 with or without a budget. There'll have to be a continuing resolution, so let's hope we can get that accomplished. It's holding up quite a few things we need to be doing.
Item seven is National North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference. How many people do we have assigned up going? Two? Okay. Those will be voting delegates then, that's simple enough. Accountability report, Dr. James and Mr. Tim Hatley.
I'll ask Mr. Hatley if he would join me.
All right, we're happy tonight to report out our testing data for last year and just several other obvious things. Of course, coming out of business many years ago, you always heard return on investment, and the two graphs that we have presented here, if you look at them, it's third graders, this is nationwide, over 2,000 school districts are in this sampling, and if you look at Stanley County Schools for eighth graders and third graders that were tested, we're actually above the average. That means you're getting a return on your investment. So, there's a lot of work being done, put in here tonight, and as you've already heard, the Assistant Principal of the Year and Principal are two very hard-working individuals, as all of our people are, but just to make it known to the public, because you always hear, schools seem to be a place for people to easily throw rocks at, but here's some great data, it shows a positive impact that we're making in each and every one of our Here's two more slides that I talked about. There's actually about 40 years' worth of trend data on economically disadvantaged students and performance. There's 13 states, I believe, that still use the A to F grading system, the one that North Carolina adopted, come out of Florida, which is abandoning their system or going to a different type system to show the hard work that occurs in classrooms every day. The A to F grading system, if you look at these two graphs, what I like to look at is the regression analysis line, which is the R squared. Over 10 years, that number has changed very little, even with the millions of dollars that we have poured into education. So, to sum it up and make it very simple, as hard as we work inside classrooms, we can't overcome all the impacts that poverty has on a student. We had some other slides, and I don't think Tim or I included them in tonight's presentation, but for example, 0 to 3 years old, 80% of the brain development occurs in a child. We get children at five years old, 80% of their brain has already been developed, so it's hard to maybe undo some bad habits, and also hard for those students that are significantly behind to get caught up. In kindergarten, a student that's economically disadvantaged enters kindergarten with around 5,000 words in their vocabulary, whereas a student that's not economically disadvantaged enters with 30,000 words. That is a tremendous gap. And if you, our math tests are not, they're common core math tests, and most of them now are reading problems, so if you're a child that struggles with reading, you're going to do poorly in math also, because the way the questions are worded. There's no simple mathematics, A plus B equals C, now it's all word problems. So, just wanted to mention that, as we put that in perspective, that poverty is the enemy of education in our nation, not teachers, not administrators, not schools, school districts, school boards, it's poverty. And I'm like Mr. Poole, Chairman Poole, I wouldn't say anything without a solution, there's a solution, early childhood learning. In North Carolina, we started the More at Four program during the Jim Hunt administration, and that has stayed with us for many years, and has been instrumental, I think, in helping educate some of our most at-risk students. The Head Start program is another program that the federal government runs, not underneath the education umbrella, but again, a program that is ran, we're getting ready to partner with Head Start here in Stanley County at Norwood, so they're excited to join us because they want our expertise in the education realm to help prepare their children that go through their program to be more ready for school when they enter in our hallways. So, good partnership there, looking for some more of those. But early education is key to solving the reading problem we have in our nation. And again, as I mentioned to you guys many times, I learned to read in Sunday School. Our nation's changed quite a bit, a lot of people don't go to church, that's their privilege by all means, but again, my Sunday School teacher was an actual K2 teacher in school, so of course, she helped us with phonemic awareness and vocabulary and other things. So, when I entered school in first grade, I could read. That's not the story with every child. So, again, we need to be cognizant of the fact, poverty is our enemy, and anything we can do to help offset that will definitely help our kids, the summer reading programs, after-school programs, all of these are designed to help with that gap in reading. And the sad part of it is, California done a huge research study years ago, and the sad part of that is, they build their prison cells based on third-grade reading failures. So, it's sad that we know that data, but yet struggle to do something about it. The Leandro case has been going on here in North Carolina for over 25 years. Judge Manning ruled in that case, and if you recall, there were seven, excuse me, nine original counties that sued the state for inequitable funding, and that case is actually being wrapped up. WestEd is an external organization that's been working with superintendents, teachers, principals across the state to actually come to a conclusion for our General Assembly and our state government, because in North Carolina, you do have a right to a sound, basic education. And that was, unfortunately or unfortunately, is being defined, I think it's fortunate, is being defined by the court system. So, when this premise comes out, I think you'll see that we're not funding our school system or systems nearly where we need to be to accomplish what we need to in today's society. Here's another interesting piece of data, ACT scores. If you look at this, again, poverty has an impact, or economically disadvantaged has an impact on ACT scores. I studied this a while, Tim and I did, some pretty significant figures here. If you look at the increase in ACT scores versus family income, so again, a direct correlation from ACT scores to family income, pretty staggering. All right, so let's talk about our performance grades. In the state of North Carolina, of course, an A, everybody likes to get an A in class, under 20% of our schools have an A, and typically, if there's an early college that doesn't have an A, that would be few and far between, there may be a handful or less, but schools that have less than 5% for introduced lunch, and most of these are early colleges. So, in my mind, shooting for an A, we would always want to shoot for an A, but the A in our system is almost impossible to attain. So, when you look at that, I consider a B and A, and a C a B. So, you can look at the numbers here on your graph, and I will tell you that Stanley County Schools, there was a huge article that WSOC did on Union County Schools because 90% of their schools were a C or higher. Well, they didn't call us, 96% of our schools are a C or higher. So, here's an interesting piece of data. On the Ds, there were 12 D schools that went down, we had six of those. So, I'm sorry that Mark Johnson didn't show up tonight to give us a banner for that, but we do have one D school left, we had six last year. So, if you look at the breakdown here of Stanley County versus North Carolina, we actually have a few more Cs, but we also have more Bs, and if you look at where we want to improve, of course, is the As, we have 5%. The Ds, we have one school that's a D, and they won't be a D next year. I'm pretty confident of that with the team we've put together and the support systems we put in place. So, some good data here. And this is just our schools that met or exceeded growth, and Tim will go through those a little bit deeper, I won't steal his thunder. Of course, green is good, so the far right-hand column, green is good, red's not, blue's even better. So, if you look at this, B schools, we had six B schools, and only one D, we had an A So, we just put them in order here. So, if you look at, the early college has had an A, that SPG score of 89%, actually, if we would hit 90%, it would be a school of excellence, and that would be as high as you could go in the ranking system here in North Carolina. West Stanley High, a B, Baden Elementary, a B, Locust, a B, West Stanley Middle School, a B, North Stanley High, a B, and Millingport, a B. And I will say that Millingport went from a D to a B. And if you look at Stanley County Schools, the number of low-performing districts, we actually rank better than Union County and the ones that are above it. So, we rank better than anything that's north of Stanley there. The only two school systems around us that actually give us any competition this year was Davidson and Richmond County Schools. So, again, kudos to all the hard work. So, I'll let Tim take this over, because I won't steal his thunder, he's really excited. So, I'll let Tim take it over from here, and I'll go sit down.
Thank you, Dr. James. As Dr. James has mentioned in earlier slide, he looked at proficiency versus poverty, and that is basically what this slide here, except we're looking at our own schools, and we're looking at the school performance grades from this past year. The blue columns is percentage of Title I students identified at those schools. The orange column is the SPS, the School Performance Score, which is that 80% proficiency, 20% growth. And typically, it would be like an X. The school on the far left would have the lowest Title I percentage, would have the highest achievement. And then, as you go across, the Title I percentage would increase while the proficiency would decrease. And if you'll notice, that's typically what's happening there. But, we have identified four schools that were circled in green, because based on this model, those are overperforming. You see Aquadale, South Stanley Middle School, Baden, and Norwood above that broken orange line. So, we're just, you know, sort of proud of these schools that, you know, they have that poverty, that Title I percentage, but yet, they're still overachieving without high proficiency and growth. So, just celebrate some of our high performers. This is the same type data, Title I versus school performance scores, but looking at our high schools. And you'll notice North Stanley, SEC Stanley Early College, and West Stanley High School, basically, their Title I percentage is within about a 2-point range, and then it increases as you go to South Stanley High School, Arma High School, and then the Academy. But then, the proficiency has that pretty significant drop, but there again, that is what the national norm is, as poverty increases, proficiency decreases. But there again, you know, our schools are just a little bit above that broken line, so that means they're actually getting a little bit better return than what one would expect. Now, Dr. James has talked about school performance grades and scores. We'll talk a little bit about the Growth Index, because personally, I think the growth is the important component, is how we're moving students. It's not necessarily if they're proficient or not, to just make sure that we're moving them in the right direction year after year. And if we put together consecutive years of good growth, proficiency will come, no matter where you started or how low you started. This is a little busy here, but it's colorful, but this just shows the history since 1213. And if you'll notice, one reason I use this slide, if you go back to 1213, there was a lot of red. And as you progress to the right, the reds become less frequent and replaced by blues and greens. Same data, but I've organized it three different ways here. The first chart to your left is simply comparing 1718 to 1819, and you'll see in that fourth column, the 1819 index. And that is actually where we get our growth. Anything from a positive 2 upward exceeds expected growth. Anything from a negative 2 to a positive 2 meets expected growth. And unfortunately, anything below negative 2 did not meet expected growth. Next to that column, you see the index change. That is the actual change from the previous year. If you look at Arma High School, 1718, for example, they were a negative 3.20. Their index increased to a negative 2.61, so their change was a .59, which was 18%. And I won't go through all of them, but that's just kind of explaining those numbers to you. The graph in the middle, the table in the middle, is simply the schools ordered from the highest index to the lowest. Baden Elementary was our highest growth index at 8.14, which is outstanding. And then, finally, to your right, the last table there, same information, it's just ordered in a different fashion. It is ordered from the largest index change to the smallest. So, Oakboro coming in with a growth index for 1819 at 4.5, increased, if you go over that first, 1718 was a negative 7.91, a negative 7.91. They increased to a positive 4.5 for an overall index change of 12.41, which is huge. And just to give equal credit, we did have two other schools that had double-digit index growth. Arma Middle School had 11.31, and South Stanley Middle School increased a little over 10. When you look at growth statewide, there was 2,488 schools that received a school growth index for the 1819 school year. Baden Elementary was 42nd with their growth of 8.14 to put them in the top 2%. If you filter down and only consider the K5 schools, Baden has the second-highest growth behind Southwest Elementary in Guilford County, which had 11.16. West Stanley Middle was 71st out of those 2,488 with a growth of 6.98 to put them in the top 3%. Millingport Elementary was 151st with a growth of 5.44 to place them in the top 6%. Arma Middle was 236 with a growth of 4.56. Oakboro STEM followed closely behind at 243rd with a growth of 4.5 to put both of those schools in the top 10% of the entire state. As Dr. James has already mentioned, 96% of our schools earned a school performance grade of C or higher. Stanley Early College again earned a school performance grade of A for the fifth time out of six years. Baden Elementary, North Stanley High School, and West Stanley High School earned a B for the second year in a row, while Locust Elementary and Millingport Elementary earned a B for the first time. And as Dr. James already mentioned, Millingport had that huge jump from a D to a B. And again, 81% of our schools met or exceeded growth for the 1819 school year with nine schools exceeding expected growth, the most we've ever had. And then, also to recognize, two schools, Indy Elementary and Oakboro STEM, who exceeded growth for their first time ever, and then West Stanley Middle, who has exceeded growth for six years in a row now. Behind growth, personally, I think our graduation rate is probably the second-most important indicator that we can be measured by, because that is our purpose as a school system, is to educate our students and prepare them to go out in the world as high school graduates. And looking at this, this is our four-year cohort graduation rate that tracks freshmen that come in, measures them through four years of high school. Our cohort graduation rate for 1819 was 91.5, the highest we've ever had. We included two graphs here just to show, the one on the left, the line graph shows us in comparison to the state. And if you notice, going all the way back to 2009, we've always run pretty close with them. 2014 and 16, we did have little dips. 2015, we're a little bit above, but our difference between the state is, again, is the highest it's ever been. We're at 91.5 last year, they were 86.5. And then, if you look at the chart there on your right, we always like to compare neighboring districts. When you look at the Unions, Cabarrus, Charlotte Mecklenburg, Rowan, the only neighboring school district that had a higher graduation rate than us was Union County at 94%. And then, just to look at individual schools, we were very excited that all four of our traditional high schools, as well as Early College, had a four-year graduation rate equal to or higher than that of North Carolina's 86.5%. Stanley Early College, their rate was actually higher than 95%, but that's the max that the state reports. South Stanley High School, 93.8. North Stanley High School, 93.2. West Stanley High School, 92.9. And Arma High School came in matching the state at 86.5%. We presented a short segment of this to the principals and admin today, and I told them, and I'm going to give you the same little tidbit of my own personal thought here, the academy, you notice, is 68.3. And if you look at last year, it's 80, it was a pretty significant drop. Some of the calculations have changed, the mannerisms, some of the structure has changed over there. But, I told a little story today, the academy's kind of like a good lineman on a football team for our other high schools. They get a little dirty and a little beat up, so that our other graduation rates can be a little bit higher, because they take those students that are at risk and probably would be dropouts, and they take them and give them that second and third chance. And a lot of times, we still get them to be graduates, but sometimes, we do lose a few, and often, they take the hit for it. So, you know, that 68.3 doesn't really tell the whole story there. This, real quick, just looks at all of the major indicators that the state looks at. This is grades 3 through 8, reading, math, science, our high school subject areas, as well as graduation rate, ACT, math rigor, work keys. And it's simply, in the bold black, we have what we call GLP, Grade Level Professions. That's levels 3s, 4s, and 5s. That's what the state considers proficient. The lighter color there is CCR, College and Career Ready. That's levels 4s and 5s. That's what the federal government uses. For the duration of the presentation, we will be using GLP, since that's what the state measures us on. We just wanted to give you those figures there. Same figures, but we compared them to 1718 to see what, how did we change from the previous year? And you'll notice, in most areas, we did have an increase over the 1718 school year, which is always good. As I tell teachers, staff, administration, when I go out into schools, there's three ways you look at data. You look at it intrinsically, you compare yourself to where you've been, you compare yourself to your neighbors or those that you're competing against. Stanley County, be our neighboring districts, our schools compete against each other. And then, we always, lastly, look how we compare against the state. So, anytime we can look, and we've done better than the previous year, in a majority of subjects, we're heading in the right direction. That's that growth component that I spoke about earlier. Now, high schools was a little bit different. I'll speak about Math 1 here in a few minutes. That's a bear of itself, but we did have a few drops there, but if you remember back to last year, high school was really the only area that we had significant increases in, so that was kind of a correction year. Just a little bit different here, if you look at the chart on the left, that is looking at Stanley County compared to North Carolina, our GLP 1718. And if you notice, last year, we were below the state in everything. And I told you that last year, when I come for you, I always try to tell you the good, the bad, and the ugly. But if you look at the chart on the right, that's us compared to the state this year. And you'll notice, and I put an extra little column out there with green to highlight it, those are the areas that we are now above the state. So, in about seven or eight different indicator areas there, we have gained on the state, and there's several there where we're within just a simple percentage point or two of catching up with them as well, where last year, we were four, five, six, seven points behind. So, we're definitely headed in the right direction. Again, this is the same thing, looking at the high schools. If you look at that far right, we did lose a little bit of ground. Overall, all EOCs, we are just lower a half percentage point behind this year where we weren't last year, but we've increased in those other areas. The light green is where we was actually above the state last year. The darker green was where we were behind the state last year, but are now above them. This is where we actually want to see red. This is comparing Stanley County to the North Carolina, to the state averages, as well as our surrounding counties. And we know, when you look at surrounding counties, we have the tale of two different kinds of districts. We have the Unions, Cabarrus, the Mecklenburgs, the haves, and we have the Ansons, the Richmans, Montgomerys, the have-nots. And luckily, for us, we kind of fall right in the middle of the two groups. And if you look at this, anywhere you see red, that means Stanley County scored higher than that district in that subject area for this 1819 school year. Now, you would expect the Cabarrus, the Davidson, the Union, you see a lot of white. They still scored a little bit better than we did in those subject areas. But when you look at the Ansons, the Kannaplu City, even the Charlotte Meck, Montgomery, Richmond, Rowan, there was a lot of areas there that Stanley County outperformed those other districts. And then, to kind of put it on a level playing field, this screen looks at, we compared the entire state and went out and found school districts that are very similar sized with the number of students, economically disadvantaged students that we have. We identified Chatham County, Franklin, Granville, and Sampson Counties. And there again, where you see the pink is where Stanley County outperformed those districts. So, just giving you an idea of, you know, comparing apples to apples there, rather than comparing us maybe to a Charlotte Meck or to a Union. Looking at the big picture composite, all EOG and EOC subjects, that's third through eighth, and then our four EOC subjects in the high school, you'll notice 1718, we were a little over four and a half percentage points below the state. We closed that gap to just a little over a percentage point this past year. So, we had a blip last year, but we're closing the ground, and that's what we'd like to see. Hopefully, next year, you know, you notice there that the state in orange has remained kind of consistent for the last couple of years. If we can continue that trend we had from last year to this year, hopefully, we'll catch them or overtake them in that large composite area. Then, just looking at EOGs, this is third through eighth grade elementary and middle schools. Again, we had that dip last year for the 1718 school year. We have closed it significantly to within, we closed the gap by four percentage points. The state is at 60.4% proficient, we're at 58.8. Then, looking at all EOG subjects at our elementary schools, Locust leads the way with a little over 70% of all their EOG subjects proficient, followed by Baden and Richfield. And you'll see the Stanley County average there is in purple. Since this is 3 through 8, we'll look at the middle schools. West Stanley Middle School, again, this is considering all EOGs, this is 6th, 7th, Reading and Math, 8th grade Reading, Math, and Science. West Stanley Middle School comes in in the mid-60s, followed by South Stanley Middle School, and then District Average. Now, just looking at math, grades 3 through 8. Again, we knew last year we had that blip, but this year, we made huge gains. We had an eight percentage point jump from last year, whereas the state had a gain of only two and a half percentage points. So, we're running neck and neck. We're less than a percentage point behind the state for the 1819, when you look at our EOG math scores. Then, if you break that down and look at individual schools, again, Locust had a banner year last year, coming in close to 80% proficient on math, followed by Baden and Aquadale. When you consider middle schools, again, West Stanley Middle School led the way with math proficiency. Reading's just a little bit different story. Now, last year, we did have a new test in math, and it was re-normed. And typically, when we had a new test, new norming, it tends not to benefit us. This past year was opposite for that math. Stanley County wasn't the only one. Most school districts, our proficiencies did increase, but not everybody's, because you'll notice the state didn't have the increases we did. Where our increases in math was almost three times that of the state, so we can't give the re-norming all the credit there. That was good teaching on our behalf. But with reading, even though we did have that dip again in 1718, we corrected it some this past school year. We still did not make the gains and did not catch up to them as well as we did in math. 1718, we're a little over six percentage points below the state. We closed that gap to just a little over three. Looking at individual elementary schools for their reading proficiency, again, Locust coming in there about 70%, followed closely by Baden and Richfield. For the middle schools, our reading 6 through 8 there was West Stanley Middle School, followed by Oakboro STEM, coming in just a little bit above 60% proficiency. And science, science, we typically have done well. When I say done well, that means above 70% proficiency. Even the last two years, we have fallen below the state, but we've maintained that 70% proficiency. This year, 1819, we had a huge gain from the previous year. We jumped from 70.5% proficient to 77.8. That's all 5th and 8th grade students who took a science EOG. So, that's huge. We're getting close to that 80 mark, which is eight out of 10 students being proficient. And as you notice, we did outperform the state. They were ahead of us by a little over a percentage point and a half. Now, we're ahead of them by a little over two. So, we're hoping for another good year in science, if we can just maintain there. That's something to be proud of. When you look at individual elementary schools, Baden led the way, and yes, that is a little above 90%, which is excellent, followed closely by Millingport and Stanfield. Oakboro STEM led the way as far as middle grades, science, coming in a little above 90%, followed very closely by West Stanley Middle School. Switching gears a little bit, looking at EOC and the core subjects for the high schools. And this does look bad when you first look at it. And I made a mention a while ago about the math test being re-normed. The elementary and middle schools' re-norming was generous to schools this past year. The math one- The Math 1 was not. The state released a report, two or three days before scores were released, and in that report, I have a slide here in a second that shows you that they were actually tightening the belt. The percentage of proficient scores that they allowed in their norming dropped 2% or two percentage points. So we knew that was a bad sign that proficiency would be down, and it was down in math, it affects our overall EOC subject areas. Here again, though, just looking at all EOCs, that's Biology, English 2, Math 1, and last year included for the first time, NC Math 3. It became an EOC last year. This is probably, I think, should be one of Mr. Poplin's favorite slides. I know for the last two years, I've heard him talk a lot about Biology, and it's finally paid off, because you look at this, we've, for several years, were significantly below the state. For 1819, that blue line topped the orange. That means, for the first time since 1314, Stanley County scored better in Biology than the state average. And there again, you know, science and math is where we want it, we know our math suffered a little bit, but this is good news here. We're not quite a percentage point above the state, but huge gains. Looking at Biology, Stanley Early College High School led the way, mid-80% proficiencies, followed by West Stanley High School. Looking at English 2, again, we had a decrease there this past school year. I can't really answer why, but I know we've got people in place, and they're working on some stuff, so hopefully, that's going to be a one-year incidence, and we'll have a nice rebound. But it always hurts when you go back to 1718, and we were nipping at the state's heels, and now, there's a pretty good, almost a five-point spread between us and the state. Again, the Early College led the way with proficiency in English 2, with almost 90% proficient. And then, here's the Math 1. And as, make no excuses, we were expecting this, based on what the state had given us the week prior. If there's any good news here, you will notice that our decline was not as significant as the state's. The state had a huge drop. You'll notice the state fell a little over 18 percentage points from the previous year. Ours was bad enough, ours was almost 11 percentage points. But there again, you know, we compare ourselves to the state, so we was able to stop the bleeding a little bit faster than they were. This is the graph I had mentioned earlier, and you'll notice the green lines there on the bottom, 2018, levels threes and above, this actually gives you third through eighth grade, but you'll see NC Math 1. For 2018, their norming said that at least 57% of all tests would be proficient, they narrowed the belt to 55% this past year. Whereas, if you look at the third through eight, everything increased. So as I tell people, a lot of times, we do play a game. We play the game that the state gives us, and we play by their rules, and this is one time where we're just going to have to adjust a little bit. But looking at Math 1, considering each of our high schools, again, the Early College with almost 80% proficiency, followed by West Stanley coming in a little bit above 60%, and North Stanley High School, just a tad under 60. NC Math 3, don't have a lot of comparisons, since last year was our first year, but again, as expected, Early College come in with almost 90% proficiency, West Stanley High School followed in a little above 50. And that being a new test, it does take us a few years for our math teachers to figure that out, and students get used to an EOC. ACT work keys. This is a test that not all of our students take. The students that take the right combination of CT courses become completers or concentrators, and then in their senior year, take the CT test, work keys. And they're awarded a certificate. Any student that earns a silver, or gold, or platinum certificate meets proficiency levels by the state. Here again, we decreased from our previous year, and even though it doesn't make any better, so did the state. I won't speak a lot to this, but a lot of things inside CT is changing. The identification criteria for students that will be taking work keys will be changing next school year. We have new personnel in place in the CT department, our CDC's, who's going to be helping identify students, making sure students take the right combination of courses to become eligible to take the work key. So we hope all of that rolled into one will help us benefit. And, you know, we like that to increase. College-bound students take this, but a lot of these are students that will be going into the workforce with certificates they can carry in, showing they've earned some credentials, so this is somewhere where we definitely want to make some increases. Leading the way with our work keys was North Stanley High School, and West Stanley High Schools nipping right, very closely at their heels. ACT composite scores. Again, this has been in the news a little bit lately statewide. State ACT scores are down. Unfortunately, ours was down as well this past year. The state fell a little over two percentage points, we fell a little bit over four. But, you know, looking at numbers, you know, and, you know, we definitely like, don't like to go down, but if you look at this historically, we're basically the same place we was in 1415. In 1415, we were 7.9 percentage points below the state, we're eight percentage points below the state now. So, you know, there's, you don't like to be in bad company, but when you're falling and everybody else is falling too, it sort of lessens the burden. You know, you know that you're not the only one with problems. And part of the ACT, we're given two dates. The state says, thou shalt test on this date and that date, and then if a kid happens to be sick both of those days, there's no makeups. And so that, that always hurts us. That's a concern of testing curriculum folks, but they play by very strict guidelines. But there again, we have some things in place, hopefully, we're going to increase our ACT scores over the next couple of years. ACT, what we're looking at is those students that had a composite score of 17, which is the UNC system minimum score. Again, Early College, 90% of their students had that composite score of 17, and then it was a pretty good drop, then North Stanley High School came in second, just above 50%. This slide again is looking at Title 1, but instead of looking at school performance scores, this is looking at GLP, all EOGs. And again, the blue graph is GLP, that's our proficient. The orange is the Title 1 percentages, so you see East Abbeville Mall had the highest Title 1 percentage, followed by Central. Typically, you would expect those to have the lowest proficiencies, following the economic model that a lot of scholars write about. But there again, you'll notice that we have some of those blue bar graphs, especially Baden, that shows they're overperforming, because they should fall on that blue line with their Title 1 or economically disadvantaged percentages, but their proficiency is way higher. In fact, they're almost as high as our lowest Title 1 percentage school, which is Locust on the far right. And then, just real quickly, wanted to include that, since Dr. James led in with the poverty, give you an opportunity to look at that same slide with our middle schools. And that's all for that part of the data, that, that's just a small part, but they told me I only had so much time tonight, but if you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain anything I can, or you can come by and we can talk later. Everybody laughs, because they know, once you start talking data with me, I go on forever.
Thank you for waiting to that, Mr. Hadley. Those folks behind you over there is what make it happen, though.
Yes, sir. No doubt about that.
Some of these things reflect a lot of hard work, and we appreciate it very much, and hopefully, the parents and the county appreciates it too. Go ahead.
And that's what we're leading to. Now, we're going to recognize some of those folks. Again, this was, you saw this slide in earlier, but we're going, this is the first time ever we've had this many schools exceed or meet expected growth. So Dr. James, Mr. Poplin, Ms. Calvert, thought it'd be good to recognize these schools. So what we're going to do is, we've sorted them from the highest index, and we're just going to go down the list there, and we'll start with Baden. And this is just a slide showing how their growth index has increased from 1213. And this is exactly what, as educators, when we look at data, we like to see. You know, you see negative numbers to begin with, and then they sort of bounced around, but since 1516, it's been that steady increase, from a negative 1.21 growth index to a 1.13, to a 3.95, and then for 1819, was that 8.14 growth index. So Baden Elementary. Followed by West Stanley Middle School with 1819 growth index of 6.98. With an index of 5.44, a change of 9.94 points. Abbeville Mall Middle School with the growth index of 4.56, which there again is an increase Next is Oakboro STEM with an index of 4.5, which is a change of 12.41 from the previous year. And our final school that exceeded expected growth, South Stanley Middle School with Now, for our top school that met expected growth with an index of 1.95, Norwood Elementary Aquadale Elementary School with a growth index of a negative .3. Followed by North Stanley High School with a growth index of negative 1.34. Followed by North Stanley High School with a growth index of negative 1.34. And our last school to met expected growth was Central Elementary with an index of negative 1.63. Just a little explanation, those were all the schools that exceeded or met expected growth. Those schools with positive growth are the ones that got the extra little bonus of the checks, but we wanted to recognize all of them. To break the mold for a second, we want to recognize a couple other individual schools. Apple Mall High School, and y'all have heard the issues they've gone through and everything. So we're going to recognize them. The high school with a positive 18% growth, they were our only traditional high school whose growth index actually increased from the previous years. Now some of these other, we recognize high schools, their growth was already high and they maintained growth or maybe slipped a little bit, but if you look at the slide before you, if you look at Apple Mall High School's growth index, they've moved from a negative 7.75 to a negative 4.43, negative 11, to a negative 3.2, and they were at that negative 2.61. So even though they didn't quite make it, that is huge gains they've made over several years and we wanted to recognize them. And even though Dr. James and I both have mentioned them already, Millingport Elementary School for the best turnaround. We've never had a school jump two letter grades in one year. And again, Stanley Early College, we've mentioned them a couple of times, but they've put together four consecutive years of a school performance grade of an A, five out of the last six years. So we're going to recognize them. That consistency is important, I've mentioned that a couple times during my presentation. So we'll also recognize West Stanley High School for four consecutive years of a school performance grade of a B. And unfortunately, we miscounted when we did our banners, but we have one more school that we would like to recognize. But West Stanley Middle School, six consecutive years of exceeding expected growth. So that's it. Thank you for your time. Any questions? Like I said, that's sort of the good, the bad, and ugly, but you always like to end on a high note.
It was not lost upon the chair that administrators tended to gravitate towards Dr. James when he had the check in his hand.
Very quickly.
Just remember, if those checks don't get taken at the bank, Dr. James' signature is on, not the school system. The chair is going to declare a brief recess for about five to eight minutes and give the board a chance to speak to you folks and pack your stuff and go. I know you don't want to hang around for everything, but anyway, appreciate all of you coming in, appreciate the good job you've been doing. Chair calls the meeting back to order. Mr. Poplin, do you have anything after all that long, President? Thank you. Ms. Vicki Cowart for Personnel Administration and State Services.
I'd like to draw your attention to the personnel agenda. Section 1 requires no action, but Section 2 does require action.
With approval of Section 2.
Motion for Mr. Mike and Dyer. Section 2, we have a second. Second by numerous people. Numerous board members, I should say, I stand corrected. Any discussion? Here are none of those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Harvey, do you have anything for auxiliary services? Except I'm supposed to be here at 10:00 in the morning, I got you. Dr. James.
Thank you Chairman Poole. We've got several things that we want to recognize tonight. National Bully Prevention Month, course is October, so I'll remind the leadership of that. Also, again, I want to congratulate Emily Shaw for the great job she's done and be chosen by Process to be Principal of the Year, and also Kristen Sides, which does a great job as Assistant Principal. So I congratulate both of them, and I do want to say thank you to the teachers for the hard work you do each and every day in your classrooms to accomplish the many things that were celebrated here tonight. There is no greater joy that I could find as a superintendent or probably as a board to celebrate with you all the successes you've had over this past year. We will continue to support you and those successes will continue without any doubt in the future. So that being said, there are several things I do want to bring up tonight. I was hired in February, or named as superintendent in February 2018, and met a gentleman that I've heard a lot about but had never met until we ate at Sir Pizza. I think he actually bought my meal. That would be Chairman Poole. And after signing my contract, he pulls out a long sheet of paper and said, now let me tell you what issues we have you need to deal with. I said, well, maybe you should have showed me that before lunch, and I signed my contract. But anyway, one of those things, when I arrived in Stanley County Schools, we were $800,000 in the red and no fund balance. So what that means as an individual, your bank account was empty and your creditors were calling you. So we put a 14-step plan in that year, remainder of that year, to get us back into a positive fiscal situation. Took a lot of hard work on many different people's part, I'm by no means taking credit for that myself. We ended the year with $1.2 million in fund balance, so that's a $2 million swing for y'all doing the math. I did notice that Chairman Poole was adding up all the checks, as they were being presented. So we still worked hard this year to stabilize our finances, and we ended this current year with $1.4 million in fund balance. We did this by analyzing every possible area we were losing money or we were inefficient. We continue to work on those, we continue to ask for support. I think the staff would tell you, and the board knows I'm a very collaborative leader, I very seldom make decisions outside the counsel of many different people to make sure we make the right decision. The board, in hiring me, made one thing very well known, and I want to commend them. They're very concerned about the quality of life we provide our teachers. So teacher supplement and classified supplements were two of the top things the board asked me to constantly keep on my mind and make sure that we could do something about. So I'm happy tonight to announce a $145 increase in our teacher supplement, which brings us to an average of $2,645, if my common core math serves me correctly. So that puts us closer in line with our surrounding counties, and we would love to do more as a board and superintendent for our hardworking staff members, but we'll continue this trend, I'm very sure of that, as we become frugal and look for inefficiencies. So again, one of our competitors that tends to take more of our teachers, more so than other counties, seems to be Cabarrus, which is somewhere around $2,900 to $3,000 in supplement, and that is the goal of the board in mind, to get us there sooner than later. So if we have another year like this, we should be able to put some additional money in that. If we had a budget, we probably could do better than that, but without a budget in hand, George and I didn't feel comfortable doing any more than that this year, but it is a $145 increase, and again, it brings us up to $2,645 average supplement, which is ahead of quite a few counties our size. In addition to this, we continue to have issues with bus drivers, so we're raising the bus driver rate a dollar an hour, so our current rate was 12:07 to 15:07, depending on years of experience. We'll make that range 13:07 to 16:07, and again, next year, if all possible, we'll raise that. We have reclassified several positions during my tenure and the board's input to make sure we were in line with other salaries, so we continue to look at reclassification. So several, there have been several different positions reclassified for our classified staff that have not been included in any of that. I think our commitment is, as soon as we can get a budget in hand and run some numbers, I'll come back to the board with some supplement increases for our classified personnel. So with that said, I think we should commend the board and their vision, continued vision, to make sure that we're doing the best for our employees, and it's no more enjoyable to sit here and tell you that we were able to do it this year. So it's from a lot of hard work across the gamut. Another great thing that we're partnering with, ESS is a company that provides us support services, and I've been working with ESS. One of the things we continue to talk about with teachers, teacher attendance, we're about $600,000 too much in that bucket of money, so we're trying different ways to improve teacher attendance. Actually, one of our strategic goals is to have teacher attendance at 95%. And of course, that excludes things like maternity leave and FMLA and other things, so it's just typical absences. So we can work on that, we definitely can put more money into the local fund so we can come back and increase supplement even more. But working with ESS, we have partnered with them, and they have in turn partnered with the YMCA, it's a national company, and they partnered with the YMCA. We're going to roll out a pilot here in Stanley, and if the pilot's successful, it will go nationwide. So please do not run out and go to the Y, it'll take us a week or two to put the process in place. But with our partnership with ESS and savings we've had with them, we're making, as part of a wellness plan with the YMCA, the rates for an individual employee for Stanley County, that includes board members, will be $9 a month, and the rate for a family will be $35, and that's significant reduction in YMCA costs for our employees and board. And of course, if we can improve our attendance by about 3% to 5%, we'll save additional dollars. The last thing in the finance world tonight, we were just awarded a $3.7 million, five-year grant to help us with school culture. It's called the SCTG Grant, School Culture Transformation Grant. We partnered with Montgomery on that grant, it's a federal grant over five years, so we're excited about that. That brings our total grant dollars in the last 18 months to 10.2 million that we've collected for Stanley County. So again, commend the board, we're out, they've asked us to leave no stone unturned, to make sure that we're looking for money everywhere we can to put it back in the employees' pockets. So again, excited about that, in the direction we go there. So the next item at hand, of course, I know some of you are here tonight for this. So as a superintendent and a school board, our number one responsibility is to protect our students at all costs. Our society in just the past few years has seen school violence increase exponentially. There have been 22 school shootings this year alone. We're at a time that rumors of violence must be considered substantial, incredible, until proven otherwise. Social media makes it even more difficult for school officials and law enforcement in determining the validity of a threat. Regardless, we are in uncharted times when it comes to school safety. In loco parentis means instead of the parent. This is a legal term that tasks school leadership to act in the absence of the parent for the good of the student, simply as if the child were yours or ours. I've always in my career taken this task literally and seriously. What would I want for my child, I would wish for yours. Over the past few weeks, there have been a series of incidents that led me to the decision to cancel the football game. On day two of school, we had a parent approach the bus with what was determined to be an assault weapon. While the action may have been illegal, I'm sure the students, as I know they were, and parents, as I got phone calls, were scared and intimidated from this event. Then on Friday, August 30, 2019, cheerleaders displayed a Trump 2020 sign. In a perfect world, an adult would have alerted the administration who would have asked the cheerleaders not to be holding campaign material. This is a school board policy, Policy 2055, Section C. It does address this. The school system educated all the staff, students, athletic directors, coaches, and administration on this, and levy no discipline as there is no code of conduct for this policy currently. We have over 300 policies and another 200 general statutes that we're required to adhere to, and honestly, I don't carry a little book around to look those up. If something doesn't occur frequently, there tends not to be a code of conduct for it. But moving forward, it is essential to clarify the following points as it relates to this issue. During the football game that evening, the cheerleaders, while in uniform, held up a political campaign sign. Neither Stanley County Schools nor North Stanley High School disciplined the cheerleaders for this action. We educated, we took it as a teachable moment. The focus of an athletic event should be our students, not politics, which is why the school board has a policy, and we're one of 116 districts, there's 115 more that have the same policy because we get them from the North Carolina School Board Association. This policy is in place to ensure the school system remains neutral on political issues and focuses on our students. This policy does not prohibit students from speaking their minds or engaging in protected First Amendment activities. Because the cheerleaders were in uniform and were acting as representatives of the school, the display of the sign could be perceived as the school or school system endorsing a political campaign. For this reason, the only action Stanley County Schools has taken is to ask the cheerleaders not to display the sign again. Upon becoming aware of this matter, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association placed the cheerleading squad on probation for the remainder of the football season. Probation is not a punishment, but the school is put on notice that further actions or behaviors that go against the North Carolina High School Association handbook policy or expectations of sportsmanship and proper behavior by the same team or school will be subject to punishment in accordance with their Rule 3.2. The North Carolina High School Association did not suspend the cheerleading squad. The cheerleaders were present at the football game on September 13. The cheerleaders were present at the football game on September 13th and they'll be present at all remaining games during the season. The North Carolina High School Association is the governing body for interscholastic athletics in North Carolina. As a member of this organization, Stanley County Schools is required to comply with the rules and regulations. Again, the focus of Friday night football game should be on our students, the players, cheerleaders, band members. The focus should not be on politics. For this reason, we are hopeful the situation will resolve and our student athletes can have a successful fall season and unite the common school spirit for the remainder of the year. Unbeknownst to the general public, on Saturday, August 31st, a video was posted right after the event, sometime Saturday afternoon, that many considered threatening and directed to the school. This matter was handled. So all I can say about it is protected under FERPA. On Friday, September 20th, 2019, around 10:00 a.m., a social media threat circulated and talked there would be trouble at the school and game. While the sheriff's department began an investigation, parents began arriving to take their kids home. Over 70 students were picked up or left as parents had a legitimate concern. This was approximately 13% of our student body. That is a substantial disruption of school. Typically, we have some students go home during the day, but this was well up and above that. So it took close to several hours. The threat actually was brought to the office at 8:40 by two students and it was cleared at 10:50. It took close to several hours to determine the threat was deemed unsubstantial, which means it could not be proven not that it did not occur or exist. In our current society, perception is reality. We as school officials must act upon with grave concern as we are in charge of our most precious asset, our kids. I will not take a chance with their lives, period. In talking with Rowan Salisbury Superintendent Friday, September 20th, 2019, and looking at the events up to this point, she, as well as I, were not fully confident we should play. We had already added to our usual complement of officers, six more for a total of 10 officers. Also, the sheriff had numerous other officers on site and equipment. Friday afternoon, I received multiple calls, as did Hope Miller. I would say that her phone began ringing about 9:30 that morning and didn't stop until after 4 o'clock and that's because we left our office and went somewhere else. We received multiple calls of concern from community members all over Stanley County that we should not have the game, asking us not to, to consider the safety of our students first. There were some other issues that came up, which again, are protected under student confidentiality rules, which I could not release legally except to the board. Looking at all the facts, I could not recommend in good conscience we play. I would not send my daughter to a game with the tensions that existed. The police presence alone would show great concern. We had upwards of 70 officers on site. We did what was best to protect our students and would again, if the situation presents itself. Legally, I cannot divulge FERPA protected student information outside the board or my leadership. The sheriff in turn does not disclose certain information to me as its need-to-know basis. There must be a mutual respect that we support each other and if he says there's a threat or reason for a decision, I support that and move forward. Our school safety is paramount to anything we do. Plans, processes, and procedures are not always shareable. At some point, simply trust. We will always err towards student safety. That being said, I have a letter here from the North Carolina High School Association. "The mission of the North Carolina High School Association, provide leadership and governance to interscholastic athletic programs that both enrich and support the educational experience of students." I will not read it all. "It's regrettable and disappointing that adults, especially those outside Stanley County, interjected themselves in this situation. As it is a teachable moment, those same adults modeled inappropriate behavior. Believe me, you wouldn't want to hear half the phone calls I've received. I'm still taking a Q-tip to clean my ear out." So, that was a joke. "In order to restore the educational mission of North Stanley High School, while helping the cheerleaders return to their role of promoting school spirit and supporting their sports teams, the North Carolina High School Association will end the probation period earlier than initially indicated, ending October 4th, which is five weeks prior to the end of the season." It is to be clearly understood, this action neither dismisses nor negates the board policies relative to political campaigning. So again, we did, the cheerleaders wanted to appeal. We assisted them in that. And they appealed that to North Carolina High School Association and after tomorrow, probation is lifted. So I will also mention that during the events of Friday before the ballgame began, there was some miscommunication. We have worked close with our sheriff's department to come up with procedures and a memorandum of understanding. So SRO is not what their role is. The sheriff and I know what our role is. I can tell you that we're still working on communication, but the sheriff did at one point say on television that we were in a lockdown. That was not completely correct, but a lockdown in our mind and the SRO standing in the room is an imminent threat. So just wanted to mention that. Chairman Poole and I met with the sheriff and one of his individuals to work on our communications moving forward. Apologize for any miscommunications, but our intent was to keep our students safe and if I was asked to do it again, I would call the game again. I would not send my daughter to a stadium with 70 officers on site. That just tells the story. So there was expectation something was going to happen. I'm sure it would have been safe as every other night, but again, with all that going on, we made the best decision as a board and superintendent, in my opinion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Dr. James. Next, we have public comments. And if I mispronounce your name, please correct it when you come to the podium. First speaker is Mr. Jeremy Bertino. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. You have about three minutes. If you're in the middle of a thought when I say your time's up, go ahead and finish your thought, okay?
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name's Jeremy. I'm a resident of Stanley County. My daughter is a student in Stanley County Schools. September 20th, I organized a support rally for the North Stanley High School Cheerleaders. This rally was promoted as a peaceful demonstration of the First Amendment. We were there to show support for the cheerleading squad who was put on probation unfairly by the NCHSA for posing with a picture, for a picture while holding a Trump banner. Three hours before the game, the school board and obviously the superintendent canceled the game and did not announce a rescheduled time. Shortly after I heard the news, we decided to go ahead with the rally. After speaking with law enforcement, multiple sheriff deputies and Sheriff Crisco himself had no idea what the reason for the cancellation was. The announcement was that it was due to safety concerns from a threat. Again, I asked the deputies what threat. They said there was no threat and there was no lockdown at the school. Any rumors had been put to rest quickly by the actions of law enforcement. It ended up being a few kids in school making statements they should not have. Today, I'm here to ask the school board for the truth behind the reasoning that this game was canceled. In today's climate with the school shootings, this is not something to be taken lightly. If there was a threat to the safety of the children, why were the sheriffs not notified of it? Up to this day, they still don't know. They could have handled it properly. The truth is, there was no threat other than the threat of a lawsuit from the NAACP over the theme for the student section of the cheerleaders that night, which was predetermined months beforehand to be blackout night. And that's where the students wear black clothing. Instead, the school board decided to spin the narrative and make it look like our rally caused a threat to the students. So I asked the school board to tell the truth about the communication with the NAACP regarding the blackout theme. We're tired of elected officials lying or playing a game to save their own skin. Tell us the truth about why the game was canceled. That's all I'm asking for. I'm tired of the moral shakedown of America and watching these confidence people go after easy prey. And we all know whether or not anybody's going to come up with it, you know, there's Freedom of Information Act, I guess we'll have to go after next, but I'm asking for the truth. I'm asking for a statement regarding the communication with the NAACP that night before the game about the threat of the lawsuit and about the blackout night, because that's the real reason that it was canceled. And whether or not, you know, whether or not you guys tell us the truth or not, we know what the truth is. So, that's what I'm asking for.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Joshua Flores.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My mouth is a little bit dry.
Before you get started and I'll let you have your times. Do you live in this county?
I actually live in Richmond County.
Do you have a student in this system?
No, I was fixing to tell you why I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Joshua Flores. I do reside and live in Richmond County in this small town, Elleby, North Carolina. I am a candidate for North Carolina State House Representative 66, which covers Richmond, Montgomery, and parts of Stanley County. That part of Stanley County includes Baden Lake. That's why I'm here today to actually speak up for the women, the young ladies that was on that field. Today, our politicians are more worried about their values and worried about getting reelected. This is why we have truly lost our confidence in our political system today, because of the lies that have been told by different politicians that we have elected to this great state of North Carolina. Therefore, I'm 24 years old. I never thought I'd see myself running for a public office at this age. I should be finishing college, starting a family, and having a good job. But yet, I have to run to save my future. My future is what means the most to me. My parents is what means the most to me. I was adopted from Dallas, I was born in Seguin, Texas, outside of San Antonio, Texas at six months old. Me and my two brothers came up from nothing. We had no running water. We had nothing over our head. My uncle and my aunt took me in as a sign of a good deed to actually save our lives. And I've been living here in Elleby, North Carolina, and I've been watching my political system crash around me. I have been watching the teachers leave this great state to find better pay. But when my democracy is under attack, when our freedom is under attack, this ball needs to stop and it needs to stop fast. Because this is why I have decided to run for the District 66, because I'm sick and tired of watching my political leaders, the leaders that supposedly uphold their oath of office to preserve and protect our God-given rights in this county and my county and around the United States of America. We have seen, just because they held a President Trump flag up, I'm Hispanic, my dad's Hispanic, he's Mexican-American to be exact, and he's a Trump supporter. I'm a Trump supporter. I'm a voter, I'm proud of it. I'm pro-life, pro-God, pro-wild, pro-everything. But this has got out of control. You could have killed this a long time ago, but yet, it's all about a vote for your reelection. And it's sickening to watch my political leaders and the political leaders of this great county fall down to nonsense. We need to get back to reality and get back to what's important. That means fighting for the students. That means fighting for the people of Stanley County and fighting for the people of North Carolina. Because truthfully, people in North Carolina and people of this county are sick and tired of watching and they don't have a knight in shining armor to actually stand up because they're too afraid of being political correct, I guess is how you want to say it. But it's sickening and just a shameful act for what I've done because our freedom of speech was attacked and our democracy. We have got to stop this nonsense and focus on the future of North Carolina. Let's move this, let's move North Carolina to the future. Let's enhance our communities together, not stand on one side of the aisle and say something. This is sickening and we need to stop this because you are the political leaders of this county. We need to stand up, love each other, and let's move North Carolina to the future, guys. That's all.
Thank you. Normally, I don't respond to public comments, but when people make personal accusations and say they have proof of something, I can get to the bottom of it. This board has subpoena power. We can bring people in under oath if necessary. I don't really think it's necessary. Let me give you a little timeline, some things that happened. And sometimes you say things and you're not completely in the loop and you, I'm not saying you're out and out lying, I'm just saying you're not in the loop to know what's going on. I'm going to be a little nicer than people have been to me on Facebook this past week. We had a district school board association meeting here on Thursday night prior to the Friday game. Talked with Dr. James as we left that meeting and basically I said, if you feel comfortable with it and the sheriff's department feels comfortable with it, then the game should be a go. I think we need to move on through this and put it behind us. I think it'd be a good plus thing. The next day, I was out working. I actually work for a living. I was out working and I got my phone. You can see the phone list. I got four calls from the central office, calls from Dr. James, two or three from my vice chair, and one from Ms. Watson. Ms. Watson happened to be the last one that called, so she's the first one I called to find out what was going on. I said, "My phone's blown up. What's going on?" And she informed me the board had already made the decision. They don't have to have my approval as chair. They had already made the decision, majority there. So I found out about it after the fact, but I don't run from it because I concur with what they decided to do. And if you think you can bully me on Facebook and threaten me about an election, you got the wrong guy. Because I'm never going to put child's safety over my political fortune. And if you think the people of Stanley County are going to buy that junk, you need to go peddle your ware somewhere else. And I'm just telling you what's on my mind, my friend. And you don't intimidate me, not one iota. I was in Vietnam dodging mortars before you were even in diapers. So you need to get a grip on what patriotism is. I served under the flag in Vietnam, in Iraq. I know what patriotism is. And you disparage this whole system by doing what you've done. And I think it's, you want to know what a disgrace is, that's a disgrace. And I don't need a politician to get up here and lecture me about stuff either. If that's not pandering and patronizing, I don't know what is. It's sickening. Any other board member have anything they want to say? I think this is a disgrace. And as far as NAACP, they don't threaten me either. And I don't know who you supposedly have a letter from. Has anybody up here got a call from the NAACP? Not a single board member. And that's what you were putting out. You owe me an apology, sir. And if I wasn't a politician, I'd have you for liable. But since I'm a politician, you can call me anything you want to and get away with. I understand the way it works, okay? But trust me, you don't intimidate me, okay?
I never name called you, no.
Oh, listen, I've read your stuff. I read your stuff and your little henchman that was doing your dirty work for you too. I read it all. It's a disgrace. It's a disgrace. It just goes what I said a long time ago, that social media is going to be the downfall of America. Because people get on there and run their trap and say stuff, it's not so, they have no way of proving it. They don't have to prove it. So you can take your little charade somewhere else that's not here in Stanley County. Thank you. Moving on. Board member comments. Ms. Crump.
Thank you, Chairman Poole. If you will allow me, before I go into this, I do want to just say that I'm speechless at how much excitement this county has with the growth and the celebrations that we just were able to sit and witness. Thank you, everybody. All the personnel, all the staff members, all the administration, all the central office, and our fearless leader. Thank you, Dr. James. I do want to draw your attention to something and it goes along with some of these last comments. I don't know if you can see this. About a week ago, we celebrated as a nation, National See You At The Pole Day. That was it. Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. This was an image that I saw after, the day after the fact, or maybe later that afternoon. I saw it on social media. It says, "The Boy Who Stood At The Flagpole Alone." And there's a young man at a high school who stood out at the flagpole and he prayed by himself. And I read the article, I saw the picture, and it saddened me that he was standing at this flagpole by himself because I had just posted on my social media a proud moment when I went through South Stanley Middle School and I saw that and it was captivating. It was a beautiful picture in the early morning before school started. And I'm going to share that with you, but before that, I was saddened when I saw this and I thought, "Nobody's standing with this little fella and he's out there and he's praying." And then I read the article, actually, his mom wrote about it. And when she questioned him about it at the end of the day, she wanted him to see some of the posts because it had hit social media in a national way and he couldn't believe it. And it says, "When..." And it says, "When Hayden came home from school with tears in his eyes, we read through the hundreds of comments together. He told me with sheer amazement in his voice that as he stood alone and prayed, the cry of his heart had been 'God.' As people drive by, let them wonder, let their hearts be pricked." He laughed and said, "It's crazy because it's like he answered in this big way." And that's exactly the way God shows up. I don't want to stand up here and preach, I know that's not really the right platform, but I do want to say that I had posted on my social media a picture that looks like this. And my son's walking to this huge crowd. There had to be at least a hundred kids and adults and mentors that were out there and they were saying prayers that morning. And my post was, "A Beautiful Sight This Morning At South Stanley Middle School. National See You At The Pole Day. In Light Of The Recent Division Our Community Has Experienced Over Constant Stoking And Prodding And Agitation From Sources Who Thrive To Create Division. This Is A Testimony That The Love Of Christ Brings Us Together No Matter Our Differences." My God is a unifier, a shield from fiery arrows, a healer in sickness, a lamp post to our feet, a promise made and kept, and ultimately, the victor of all spiritual warfare. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Crump. Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna echo what Ms. Crump said. A huge congratulations to all of our schools, our principals, our teachers, um, everyone in the central office for a job well done. We're extremely proud of everything that's going on in this county. Secondly, um, I will address the, the issue with North Stanley. As Mr. Poole alluded to, Chairman Poole, he was not able to be reached during this time. Myself serving as the vice chair, I had actually talked to Dr. James and asked him, you know, how things were looking for the football game. And he had told me at that time, he knew of 30 officers that was gonna be on site. Me, being the conservative I am, did the math. I, I apologize, I just take that back, I've got my numbers mixed up here. Fifty officers. Thirty dollars is what we pay those officers per hour. Rejecting five hours of work, that would have been a minimum of $7,500 for school security for a football game. As a conservative, I can't even make sense out of paying anywhere near that for security for a high school football game. So that was one thing. Secondly, as far as the sheriff knowing why we called the game, that's not what he was elected to do. And frankly, that's our job. Secondly, since the NAACP was brought up, I know I typically probably find myself on the opposite side of the political, political spectrum as the NAACP, and that's okay. Um, and I wanna talk about a couple of things that the NAACP has done. And, um, I wanna just, I have a list, actually. I know for a fact that members of the local NAACP has served and volunteered as prompters for testing and stayed after hours to tutor our students here in Stanley County. I know that members of the local NAACP serve on booster clubs at our schools and work concessions for our games. I know that members of our local NAACP serve as members of our PTOs. I know that members of our local NAACP stand out in front of our schools, welcoming students back on the first day of school, giving them high fives. I know that local members of our NAACP hand out backpacks full of school supplies to kids that have parents that don't have enough. And lastly, I know members of our local NAACP stand around a flagpole and hold hands with students as they pray. So, and one thing I will say that a, a member of the NAACP has never done, has threatened me to cancel a high school football game. And I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Ms. Watson.
I echo everything that has been said already. I really wanna thank Emily Shaw for our Principal of the Year and Kristen Sides as our Assistant Principal. Everything that has been done through the county office, we appreciate all that, and I'm very, very proud of all the schools, all of our assistant principals, principals, our teachers, everyone in school. I'm just proud of all of the things that are going on in Stanley County. We're doing some really, really good things. And as far as all this going on, um, I honestly think if the media would leave us alone, go somewhere else where you can find some good news that really counts, because our kids are tired of this. They're totally tired of this. They wanna go back and get in their schools and do what's right and get their education. I, I don't know where a lot of people are coming from, but, um, our decisions are made what we pray about, what we feel in our hearts, and the leadership of Dr. James. And I think people need to realize, this is a good county, and if you don't like it, you can move. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Mr. Chance.
Thank you, Ms. Poole. I, um, frankly, it's very hard for me to say this, but I'm almost speechless. The focus of this board and this school system is to educate and bring to light all the positive things that happen and occur within this school system. And frankly, the things we should be focusing on are principals and assistant principals who are recognized for their achievements, students and staffs who are recognized for their achievements, as will some next week be recognized, um, within their schools. And we need to be recognizing and applauding, as we've done this evening, the tremendous stride Stanley County schools have made in the past couple of years. At one time, I was hearing frequently from members of the community about how horrible our school systems were, how our school system was, and how we couldn't get businesses to come to Stanley County and relocate because the school system was so poor. Well, folks, that's not the case any longer. And I want folks to know that. If you can't take a look at what we've shown you tonight and see the good in it, then you got a major issue. Okay? I will let the comments of the former board members and the chairman stand for themselves, though I strongly concur with all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chance. Ms. Gibson. Thank you for standing up and doing all the applauding a while ago. Some of us, older folks had to sit down.
My legs hurt now. Had my exercise. First of all, thank you, Mr. Jim Eisenheimer, for coming and sharing with us, and, um, I am, I am interested in, in hearing more. I know that Ridgefield just has a special place, and it certainly, you don't go through Ridgefield without thinking about Meisenheimers. So, um, your whole family's dear to me, and I, I, I thank you for what you have shared, and, um, I wanna be able to discuss things more. And I know that Chairman Poole said something about turning things over to, uh, Mr. McIntyre and all, and I, I would like for us to be able to look at things and, and be able to talk about things as, as a board, you know, as a board and all. But thank you, Mr. Meisenheimer. I know that you put a lot of time in that. Thank you also for how you, um, worked toward getting the quarter cent sales tax passed. I know how much time you spent with that, so, um, your efforts are greatly appreciated. Tonight was wonderful, all the accolades, and, um, I said this to many of our, our principals and assistant principals, but everything starts with great leaders. And I believe we have the best in Stanley County, and, um, I, I just, I just thank you. I thank all of our administrators, our assistant principals, and then our faculty and staff because can't do it without them, and I appreciate everyone that goes into that. And then, I think Tuesday off this week, oh, um, thank you, I mean, congratulations, Emily Shaw, and to Kristen Sides. Tuesday, I read where it was National Custodial, um, month as well, and, you know, they contribute to children's learning, just like bus drivers and cafeteria workers and everyone. And I just wanna give a shout out to, um, all of our custodians and for keeping our schools clean and nice learning environments. I appreciate that. Dr. James, thank you for, um, what you said and, um, for all the things that we've done as far as securing grants. And then this, this month is also National Bullying Month. And I have to say this from being a teacher. Nothing bothered, nothing bothered me more than to see, um, a child bullied, to see a child belittled. Truly, nothing bothered me more. But then sometimes I look back and think, in today's society, no wonder children bully because they're learning it from adults. And, Mr. Joshua, you, you, you spoke about, you, you have a career or at least, you know, entering politics.
I wanna make your campaign.
Okay. And, um, you know, you said that you appreciate, uh, wanted people to learn to love one another.
To bring this country together as love.
Okay. And I, and you know, and, and I want people to, to love one another too. I think that's an, that's an important message. If our country could ever do that, then we would be somewhere, wouldn't we? But I have to, um, I have to say to Chairman Poole and to Vice Chair Ryan McIntyre, they took the brunt of attacks from this school board. Um, I read things, and, um, social media can be a good thing, and then it can be very, very negative. And they truly, they truly took the brunt of, of messages. And, um, I, thank you, Chairman Poole and Vice Chair McIntyre, um, because I know that you are carrying this board on your shoulders. Mr. Jeremy, I can tell you this, though, we had a District 6 board meeting, um, Thursday night, uh, before that, before the Friday, and I was extremely concerned about safety as far as that ballgame. I mentioned things to, um, our superintendent, and I also spoke with several on this board. And I'm gonna tell, I would, I would, I will tell you right now that I even said that I, I wanted, I wanted the game called on Thursday. Because that's how, that's how worried I was. And being a teacher, anytime that I hear anything about safety of children or, like, even that word lockdown, you know, used to in our classrooms, we, we practiced those drills, and sometimes I think we took things, and I did, sometimes I was a little complacent, and I realized this was just a drill. In today's society, you hear that word, and with everything that's happened, um, across this great nation of ours, um, I, I, I would make that call again, as, as Dr. James said, I would make it in a heartbeat because I have, I have grandchildren in this system, and I work in another system in, in the schools. And there is, that is my number one priority, is their safety. I have listened to you, um, and Dr. James, I believe, has said, yes, we will, we will work on communication more. But, um, things that were said, I, I want, I want everyone here in this public to know this. Joshua, if we're gonna love one another, then we cannot say the things on social media toward Chairman Poole and Vice Chair McIntyre that was said, because that's not love in our hearts. So, let's think about what loving one another is. And, Mr. Jeremy, I got one other thing for you. I wish you well in your campaign, but take your message, listening to me? Take your message to the State Superintendent Mark Johnson, and you tell him that our school systems need money, our teachers need money, we need supplies so that we can continue to do the best we can do and educate our children. So, he needs to hear your message of caring for our children and wanting our education to be the best that it can be. And I, and I value from what you have grown up in your life, um, and you're, you're going forward, carry forward that message of love one another, and you take that message to Raleigh, and you tell State Superintendent Mark Johnson that we need, we need funds.
Already have.
Take it to him again.
Been in Raleigh all day today.
Good. And stay, I mean, keep going. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Uh, do some wrap up. I apologize to the board for getting a little carried away, maybe, but, uh, I don't apologize for being defensive of the board. These people up here take a lot of abuse from the public. Lots of times, it's not necessarily, um, somebody speaking out of their hearts, but it's just speaking without knowledge of what's going on. And sometimes we get carried away and go beyond what we should be saying about people. I'm just recount a little bit for you. I got three Army Commendation medals serving in Vietnam, and I got a Bronze Star from serving in Iraq. I happen to be very conservative, probably much more so. And to the gentleman said he was for everything, pro-everything. I'm not pro-abortion. I don't, I hope, I hope you didn't mean to include that in when you said you were pro-everything. But, uh, so we need to watch our words in politics sometimes, uh, it can, it can come back to haunt you. I will say this, uh, as far as my, any, any relationship I've had with NAACP over the years, it's been very cordial, and people have been respectful to me. I've gone to a couple of the, uh, breakfasts over here, and the people treat me with respect, and I've never had any of them threaten me in any way, form, or fashion. And if they had, I'd probably got up and walked out of the conversation. I don't back down from anybody. I don't go looking for fights, but I don't back down from anybody. I haven't been trained to run. Trained as an armor officer. You know what the armor, armor's, uh, logo is? Combat Armor Decision. And you make a decision, you stick to it, and you go ahead. And when it comes to decision on safety of the kids, I don't back up from it in one iota. We passed the quarter cent sales tax in this county on the premise of making schools safer. We would look like a bunch of idiots just to ask for a quarter cent sales tax for safety, then turn around and put our kids in a situation that could be volatile. I'm not, I'm not concerned about the people in Stanley County. But when people get on the internet or get on Facebook and make threats to me from out of the state, I take that pretty serious. And if some idiot out there in Lulu Land responds to what they read, I don't care how many law enforcement officers you put on a campus, you can't stop somebody from coming on there. And I'm not gonna go to my grave thinking that my stupid decision caused the child to get hurt. And if I'm gonna lose an election over that, so be it. So be it. And if you wanna get out and work against me, and that's your platform, that you think we ought to endanger our kids, I, I, you know, run on that platform. Run on that platform. I don't care. Uh, so anyway, enough said. Uh, I hate all this, had to follow the very positive, uh, thing that went on tonight. I hate all this, had to follow the very positive thing that went on tonight. Dr. James, you and everybody in the system has been doing a bang-up job, and one of the things when this group came into office, we wanted to get focused back on academics, and I think you and the staff have really moved in that direction. Got a lot to be proud of, and I'll shut my trap except for one thing. We need to come up with a date for, we got to do the school improvement plan presentations, and we had to do it before the end of this month. We use, how about Tuesday? Check your calendars right quick. If you look at the last two Tuesdays in the month, let's pick one of those two Tuesdays, if you would. One evening's all we need, I hope. Okay. Twenty ninth, okay? Twenty ninth, okay. Where are we gonna schedule this for? Right here? Okay. Stan Development Room on October the 29th at, we wanna start it early, yeah? Five o'clock, six o'clock? Which, five? Can everybody do five? Okay, five o'clock. All right, that takes that, I care of that. Next board meeting will be here Tuesday, November the 5th in the Commons Meeting Room. Chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute Personnel Matters 143318.11A6, for student matters under North Carolina General Statute 143318.11A1, and attorney-client matters under North Carolina General Statute Motion by Mr. McIntyre. Have a second. Have a second. All, any discussion, all those in favor, say if I'm saying aye. Go into closed session.